Good afternoon. Welcome to Wednesday afternoon. We have Public Works. Are you still figuring out the computer, Mike?
I'm not.
We could be a while.
I need some help.
Should we go out and get fresh coffee?
Where's my newspaper, man? Thanks, Bailey. Mike Moss, Public Services Director. We have a few agenda items for the 1:30 before we move into our budget items. Starting off with a question you guys were asked on Monday was a water meter install update. And Savannah has an update from that.
Good morning, Savannah Clement, Public Services. So we still are about a third of the way through for the water meter installs. We are looking at some staff shortages. We only have a five-person crew and we've got a couple of members off for a couple of months on leave, so that will slow things down. So we anticipate having a full rollout, fingers crossed, in spring with all of the meters. So not a ton of progress, but I think there's some valid reasons. Not really related to the meters themselves, but just our kind of internal operations. But we're getting there. I did have a follow-up. Commissioner Farrell, you had asked quite a few meetings ago about the range of our meter systems. And I did, I did follow up, and I thought it'd be a good time today to bring it up. So you'd asked, you know, how far away do they track for the drive-by system? Which Ryder Woods is our most densely populated area with the new meters, and we started there first. The water sewer operators told me, given really good conditions such as line of sight, no big obstacles, boulders, you know, that kind of thing. It's about a quarter of a mile in range in good, good prime conditions. So hopefully that helps answer that question from quite a while ago.
So for the most part, they can just drive down the road and pick up all the meters?
Yes, especially Ryder Wood's a great example for the, just how many houses are in the area, in a small area that we serve. Camelot would be another good one, which we haven't started to install there yet. It will likely be our, our next install, just because there's so many people down there, like Ryder Wood.
So they're putting out some type of a signal, obviously.
Yeah, we actually had to FCC, we had to get like a license. Because of that signal, we were required to, but that was through our contract, so we didn't have to deal with that, thankfully. But yes, so that radio signal that they're transmitting, we had to get like a special license to use it and use that frequency.
So the water going through the meter charges the battery in it, or what, to get it to keep the signal working?
Um, it doesn't charge the battery. That would be really cool if they did that. But no, it doesn't charge the battery. It's just their long-term ion batteries that we will have to replace. I think their last, if I remember, which I didn't study up on it, but when we were going through the documents, they're good for about 10 years. I think around that time, right? Weather, coldness, that kind of thing, hot temperatures can affect that. But we plan to have to replace the batteries in about that timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I think I've asked before, and the ones we put in, they're, they're doing the things we ask them to do. We're not seeing any wild bills or anything like that.
I will, so I will say that on, I don't remember the quantity, but on a certain amount of ones that were installed, they were programmed inaccurately by the vendor, which we had no awareness of until we ran a billing cycle and the bills were like, oh my gosh. We anticipated seeing an increase in some just because of some of the meter's ages, right? But they were like, it was crazy. So Tracy McDaniel and our water sewer team and accounting started auditing that and realized that they were set up wrong. Instead of, I think, and I could have this backwards, but instead of a half meter, instead of a three-quarter meter, they were set up as half, or vice versa. So the consumption was completely wrong. So we had to go back and redo those and have those recalibrated. So that's been the biggest hiccup, is that they were programmed wrong on the pallet, on, on that batch.
But when you get correct bills, were they comparable with the last ones? Were not people up at sea in any?
Nothing substantial like what we thought we were gonna, yeah.
Good.
What we saw, so that's good.
We'll move on to number two. Quick update on the north lot. As you know, we got paved about six weeks ago. Still waiting on lighting. Unfortunately for us, it's still in engineering, I think through the city of Kelso to get permitted for the bases, to get the light poles up. Core Electric is doing that install for us. They updated us this morning and said they're hoping to have their engineering back from Cia Kelsa this week. If we don't get them up soon, we'll have some temporary lighting in place because we know daylight saves time as first of November, a bit dark, knowing people getting off work, so we'll make sure we have a lighted parking lot. At the same point, when we get that done, installed over there, we'll put some beauty bark between the north parking lot and Wazoo campus over there. But also, we've been looking at planters, boxes for shrubbery in the front of the north lot. Right now, the pricing we've got is pretty high, because we're trying to get something custom-made, because they're gonna be pretty large planters. So now we're gonna go back to the drawing board, maybe get something not so custom. The last thing we got was like $34,000 for three planters boxes, and we said, no thanks. Sure, so we're gonna do a little different fabrication on those and get something made, but it might be something we do this winter and get some, something planted in the springtime. It's probably not ideal to get something planted in November, December, so.
And we gotta have it engineered for a streetlight?
We didn't know that till we, we were told, yes, correct, for a streetlight, you do. Correct.
Okay, I won't comment.
So we're moving forward. We did move that ballot box, it was on this side of the south end of the lot, we put it back to where it was. So it's also good for tax payment drop-offs, but also ballots. So that's back to where it was before and has some ballards around to protect it. So that project's hopefully coming to an end soon. And next one's Savannah on the Hall of Justice HVAC update.
Yeah, so I haven't been to the board in a couple of weeks, but we're continuing to move forward. We are still on schedule. There's been some pretty significant jury trials at the Superior Court recently, so we were kind of concerned that might set us back, and I think I mentioned that last time I was here. But we're still on track as far as construction goes. That team is going to be moving into the 911 space to redo all the ceiling tiles and lighting there. And once they're out of that space, they're going to start working more on that second floor and first floor. So a big update I think people are excited about is the new lighting that's going in, you know, who knew? But people are excited to see that going in. I think it'd be great, once that basement area is done, if you guys want to kind of do a walkthrough, because it does give a little bit of, you know, a taste of what the rest of the building will look like moving forward. We were able to meet with our project coordinator, I guess he's a project manager, Anthony with Milig, he's out of Quebec, Canada, so he flew in. The last time we've seen him in person was at a stakeholder meeting. So he's in town, actually, we met with him this morning, and he'll be in through the end of the week, and he's just onsite checking to make sure things are going well. And so far, they are, so, so far, so good. Knock on wood. So now the bigger challenge for us as far as planning goes, because a lot of our efforts, you know, with Kelly and others involved, have been trying to get people in their new space, their temporary space smoothly, you know, efficiently, and, and keeping people happy on that front. Now we're starting to have those conversations about moving them back. And so those are, that kind of is our conversation this morning with the court, says now we're moving people back to their previous spaces and getting people into the space that they were in, the hotel space, like, the next day. So now we're kind of working on a whole new set of challenges, but I think we're, we've got a pretty good method and game plan in place. And IT's been great, too, so, like I mentioned that every time, but it's been going pretty well, so.
I know, we talked about the issue with the cleanup. Have they been responsive to that?
Yeah, so in talking with Anthony, so Monday mornings, we were coming, I say "we", I was not. Facilities and actually some Superior Court staff were finding that there was some dust and debris. You know, they were responsible then for cleaning it up, because nobody was onsite at that time. And so that happened for about a Monday or two in a row. Getting ahold of Anthony and letting Milig know, they're looking to hire actually a cleaning service. So they had already hired a cleaning service to do it after construction was complete in the zone, right? You know, to get it all ready for people to move back, but they hadn't anticipated they were gonna have so many challenges in cleaning up after their weekend cruise. So they're actually gonna look to hire another cleaning crew, probably the same one, which is Serve Pro, which is a local-ish company, come up and do Sunday cleanings, too. So to try to curb that. We hadn't, this Monday actually went really, really well. Didn't get any complaints. And one meeting with the courts this morning, they actually said the same thing, that it looked pretty good, so it's good, we're moving in the right direction on that. Any other questions? I'll just roll right into the admin facade update. So we have a scheduled interior kind of examination of what's going on on the inside, which I kind of talked to you guys about a couple of weeks ago. Unfortunately for us, is that's going to be taking place in the elections area of the building. So we're having to wait until the election season's over and the counting is over. And Carolyn, Fundingland's crew kind of recommended that first weekend in December. So the internal, I guess, identification of some of those problems isn't going to happen until then. So we still won't have a great idea probably until mid to late December on what our plan of action will be for that, for that repair, so.
Yeah. And I mentioned this to Savannah yesterday, in chatting with Joel McIntyre yesterday, I said, "I'm just letting you know, you can expect a request, a capital improvement request from us for historical building facade," just so they were aware.
No, and I appreciate that. We'll need, we'll need a lot of funding support for this. It will not be cheap. I know Kathy, though, in her previous experience in running some facilities and capital projects in her other past career, she mentioned some pretty cool, you know, features that they had done for some historic buildings, and, and so we'll be looking at that. Also, the two-year grant cycle for Washington State Historical Courthouse Buildings, which is, I think I mentioned again this before, opens up in June of this year. And so it's a two-year opportunity, so we'll need to make sure we get that application in to, to be eligible for those, too, so.
So I noticed we've got a sandwich board out at the south entrance, that a part of the time it was up, it said that that entrance was closed, use the east entrance. And then voting week started, so now it's pushed off to the side and it says, "Vote here" to come in that door.
So that should only be on Fridays that that entrance is closed. So if that was up during the week, then that was done in error. That, that entrance is only closed on Fridays for court.
Okay.
It is still open and available to the public and unlocked. It just sounds like maybe it wasn't put aside all the way or wasn't turned around so that maybe it looked like it was closed, but I'll make sure. Mike's making sure we'll make a note of it. So for voting, that entrance is, is open, just Fridays only. Okay, mine, mine's also the next one. Do you mind handing these to them? So our, our last item today is a space allocation, allocation request. This is part of the CETIP policy process, and so departments who want to move into space, or move, move out of space, or give up space, which never happens, we've asked that they complete this process. And so before, it was a policy that required the departments to submit kind of a letter. And since we've changed the policy and it is very new, Noxious Weeds is the department making the request? And this is the first time going through the process for both them and the, the committee. So they did it both ways. So you have a letter in front of you, which I think is pretty valuable with a narrative. And then also, you have the form that we ask them to complete, which is just part of the new revised policy. I know that Jennifer and her team with Beth, they're here, but I will go ahead and explain the process. And so Jennifer did submit these two documents about a month ago. The CETIP committee met, she did a little brief presentation, and then afterwards, the committee voted anonymously, and they did vote to make a recommendation to allow them back to their space in the annex to the board. And so that is the committee's recommendation. There is a caveat in there that we will be using that space, as, as I mentioned before, for the Hall of Justice HVAC project. And that, the only department we have slated to go into, into that space right now is the PA's office, and they'll be moving in in January through mid-February. So I just want to present that to the board, and...
So the, the committee looked this over and said, "Makes sense to us."
Yeah.
And the only caveat I'm hearing is, we're, if we okay it, we're just waiting till we're done with over here, so we make sure that we have hotel space for people?
Right. There was some conversation and questions to me about what the potential future use of that building will be, and if that would... And if that would, you know, kind of limit Noxious Weeds' ability to use that space. And of course, I, I don't kind of, I didn't have any concrete answers. I did share that I know a lot of departments have been looking at the building because we get questions about measurements and floor plans. But, you know, I can't speak to maybe future plans to what that looks like. And so I couldn't really answer that for the committee. So I did get some responses that were like, well, making sure that we can use that space for the HOJ project and assuming there's no future use, okay, you know, or yes. So there's just a lot of unknowns, so without.
Well, is it really any space? If, if some type of thing came up and, well, just like with OPD, we said, okay, hey, we're going to have to move these people. So then we made that decision, that can happen at any time.
It could, yeah. And with Noxious Weeds specifically, theirs was a little different in that they were forced, forced out, not because of OPD necessarily, but we had that water damage, right? Yeah, and so that kind of played into it as well.
I guess what I'm saying is, it's really hard to set a space to say, well, we don't know we're going to use it for, so we're going to keep it empty till we figure it out.
Yeah.
But I think that's kind of a waste, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, and I think by, and Jennifer may have better and more information than I do, but I think the county's responsibility is to provide, you know, adequate usable space for Noxious Weeds. And that, that's kind of our role and where that space is, is up to the county and the board. And so it's really, like you said, dependent upon what we may need to use it for.
This might be a question for Jennifer, but you, you would probably know the answer. Moving into that bigger space, we're going to be going with the new current rent rates. Jennifer, how does that affect the, the budget that we've got for what we have allocated for rent?
Hi, Jennifer Mendoza with Noxious Weeds. To answer your question, our program measured out the space there compared to the space that we have now. And if we don't include the bike room space, which currently we have because of our space now. So it's actually going to be less than the budgeted amount because the square footage should be less. The square foot rate is the same because the two buildings, correct me if I'm wrong, are built at the same square footage rate to tenants.
Yeah. The bike room would probably continue to be used, but I would imagine you would want to use it for storage or entrance access. I'm guessing, you know, we wouldn't, we don't have another department that wants just the bike room, so I'm guessing they would use that as well, but. Yeah, so there's an allocation, it's the same facilities allocation, we don't charge them rent or lease. They're only charged what the facility's allocation is for every other department that's not general fund.
And you're going to incur whatever costs are required for the move, your department?
I believe so, I don't anticipate many costs. We plan on moving our things primarily ourself with very little help from facilities, probably just the really big cabinets. And maybe a small amount of setup time from IT, but we also think we could manage some of that ourselves. So just where we really, really need the help to move over there, but there shouldn't be a whole lot of costs otherwise. The biggest.
Their, their board and their, their commissioner liaison will help move stuff forward.
You know, that would be fun, bonding experience.
The, the biggest expense that we really anticipate is to reprint our materials again with our new, old address, new old. But we do that each winter anyway, in case there's updated information on our fact sheets, we review those in the winter. So now is the time to decide what address to put on those things before we start our printing project, so.
I hate to admit this, I haven't been in the annex yet, how many floors is it?
The annex has three floors.
How much of it are you going to occupy?
Half of the first floor or less than, I think it's less than half.
It, well, it's half of the functional space that's usable in there. It's, it's three stories, but only two are, are usable. The third story is completely storage. Love to take you in there, maybe, is it cleaned up?
Is there an elevator in that building?
There is, yeah.
Does it work all the time, better than this one?
Well, it's not been used for like a, you know, a year, so yeah, it works great, no, but.
I think we took parts off it today to get this.
To get this one working.
It's worked. Well, is that where you got the part?
Yeah, they couldn't find a certain part, so.
Then I came out and I saw it was working, I said, well, they must have.
They couldn't find a certain parts, I think they.
We haven't discovered a tuberculosis ward on the third floor of that building?
We, on the annex, no, on this building, yes. Yeah, that's a secret, that's a secret door above HR, it's pretty crazy.
So you're looking for just.
Just board direction on whether or not Jennifer and her team can move back into the annex, into space, previous space they used.
Whether we, we just want to know if we accept the CIP?
Yep, and the recommendation from the committee.
I'm good with it.
Sure. Yeah, I have no issues. I, I do have another question, since it's a separate building, how's the electric bill work for the county? Are the individuals' buildings built separately?
So it really depends, but we have multiple accounts and by locations, this really depends on the, where the meter's at and how it serves it. On annex and admin, do you know off the top of your head, they're shared? So it's really not going to affect that. I mean, but for the Hall of Justice, for example, the boathouse is on a completely different meter than the hall. It's really nice for, for those in there that can use that space when there's no power at the hall, because they have power, different meter, different account.
Are they shared, the, the common areas also? Are they included in that rent over there, in the annex?
Their square footage is only, and Sean can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's really only like occupied space. Now, I don't know that, I don't think we charge square footage with the break room and the fridge and the restrooms are all common. I don't, I don't think we do that, yeah, I think it's just their office space. So I'm hearing, I'm seeing head nods, I'm hearing yes, so I think that's thumbs up. So thank you for going through that process and being the first victim slash volunteer.
Be a guinea pig, I'll work with.
Move on the weekend, right?
Should I work with on timing, because I know we'll need to wait.
So yeah, what I'll do is just give you kind of the on or around date that they're moving out, they being the PA's office, which might fit into your springtime target. So fingers crossed, okay, thank you, thanks guys.
Before we move into budget, do you guys have any miscellaneous items for Public Works?
Do. The houses that we own, are they being occupied?
The two houses, the Janus houses? Or you have other ones?
Well, Dallas asked me about houses that we own and if they're being occupied. And I'm not sure if it was the Janus houses or if we have other houses that we own.
I don't think Janus is how, that's not.
I think Janus is it, and I know they're occupied.
Yeah, we have the two homes on Washington Street next to the coroner's office and those are, we recently re-leased to Janus House.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay, I'll let him know.
We're going to pass out a few items before we jump into budget.
Where the hell do you get paper that big?
You don't want the bend.
Oh, I don't care. You got bigger? I'll wait for it, wait. Either that or I need thicker glasses. This is everything you sent over email, just in print, okay?
Sometimes it's nice to have some of the hold and look at.
Yeah. Appreciate you sending that over, I saw, what, late last night I saw that it was in my email.
I, I wish I sent it earlier, we had some last minute changes, so it came this, this morning sometime.
It was good.
I've been in meetings all morning, so I haven't got to look at your.
Sure, we'll say it last night.
Attachments, but I appreciate the thought.
But yeah, I would echo that, I always appreciate that, because at least I get a chance to scan it and see if anything pops out.
So we're going to start off with a big piece of paper on page two there, and the packet's kind of small, the organizational chart. So we decided to give you a bigger copy here to read through, just because we have a lot of different divisions and different, of course, people running different divisions. And so we tried to code it, so on the left-hand side there you can see the county engineer, Susan, in charge of quite a few items there. We have the interim assistant county engineer, but also below that you have stormwater, diking, and then also a roads engineer, landfill engineer, county survey crew and construction manager. So, and a number of people below them. So she has quite a bit of a big team there on the engineering side, all in green on the left-hand side. And we both share a little bit of the middle green, that's the road operations manager, the arrow goes to both Susan and myself. I think Crab requires the operations and roads report to a county engineer, but she shares that duty with our team overseeing roads. So, public services director, we have two people in the public services, that's me and Savannah. But under us is the following, first is solid waste in orange. So we do have a compliance manager at the landfill, but also two solid waste supervisors. And then a compliance specialist, fourteen operator threes, those are the people running the equipment at the landfill, and then an office specialist. And on the right-hand side in blue, we have Savannah, and then we have our managers, the finance manager, Sean, Rowey, and then our finance, facilities manager, Aaron, business manager, Tracy, and safety operations, Justin. With purchasing and facilities, accounting, office staff, all below that. So quite a few people under the organizational chart. We try to break this out and have as least amount of arrows for you guys to follow as possible, but we're kind of all over the board with, you know, purchasing landfill, solid waste, water sewer, all that fun stuff. So one more point, down below road operations, we have the shops, the cast rock shop, Kelso shop, Longview, Klammer, but also ERNR where our mechanics are at. But we have two shops that also oversee additional people. So the cast rock shop, which is ran by Rodney Gardner, has utility operations, that's our water sewer crew, they report to Rodney. And also parks with Alyssa Dunn and Megan, they report to Rodney also. And then the Klammer shop, which is Bob Douglas, he also has vegetation control, which is our spray team. And our sign shop, which is three people that work on all our signs around the county. And then they're the ones who get called out for any emergencies or road barriers or road blockades, or if someone runs through a stop sign at three in the morning, it needs to be put back up, they're the ones who get the call, so.
All the shops have their own manager now, right?
They do, yeah.
We're sharing.
We're no, no longer sharing Klammer and Kelso, that is correct, yeah. Any questions on the org chart?
Are we coming along with the description on the, on the one? Yeah. You know, we've been working on that.
Savannah, public services, so we're pretty close. I think, you know, we, we have a draft already, ready to go, we just need to kind of do some final touches. I thought maybe we were talking, also speaking to that engineer in training we talked about that would do dual diking district. We just had a, an engineer who we just hired, had some personal stuff going on anyway, he put in his notice. And so we're looking to potentially fill that vacancy with that engineer in training with the diking district support. So just a heads up on that, since you gave me the opportunity.
So slide number three, just a little background on our roads, as I mentioned before, the four shops under operations. We have 72 employees working in the road division on slide three. Some of our major activities, of course, is winter operations. We've already, we had a big winter ops meeting on Monday, making sure we had chains and snow bits, our snowplow bits, grader bits. Salt, sand, mag, everything we need for de-icing roads. We know those cold conditions are right around the corner for us, so we want to make sure we have everything in order. Emergency response throughout the year, and also a big program for us is the chip seal program that you guys are quite aware about. What we do, ditching, brushing, working on culverts, road maintenance, spray, road signs, of course, in the office, finance and engineering. So other divisions like water sewer and stuff, not added on here because they're not under the roads division. But with 72 employees, we're, we're spread out, of course, you know, all throughout the county. So what we accomplished, a few of the accomplishments this year on the road maintenance side, we did chip seal a little bit over 63 miles of road. And working with Lakeside as our contractor this year, overlaid 19,000 tons, which is about 30 million pounds of asphalt. And then our road crews, of course, ditching, brushing, those type of items, we did about 3,800 miles every year on average. Because we have to go through every road every time. Ditching is one thing, but brushing and mowing is a different thing, striping is a different thing. So yeah, we, on the road systems a lot throughout the year.
When we do asphalt overlay, we're literally just overlaying another layer, right? We're not taking up the old stuff and recycling it.
It depends.
Yeah.
So Susan might come up and talk, but I'll take a hack job at it as well. If there's curb, we have to grind as well. But Susan will have a much more eloquent explanation.
So the, as Sean said, the urban area, the roads with curb and gutter, we do need to grind those down. Because if you just keep overlaying, you feather it in and you end up with steep slope, steep cross slopes. And so people can't get out of the driveway anymore because to match the curb line, otherwise you fill up that gutter and you end up with a curb this high. So we do have to grind those areas down. They do take that back and recycle it. There will be other roads that will grind down if they're overly distressed and it looks like the underlayer is better. We'll grind them down and do an overlay, especially on overpasses and bridges. Because every time you overlay a bridge, you add that many more pounds to it and then it eventually impacts your pavement rating. So a lot of the urban, the rural roads, which were originally chip seals, we, we just overlay. We have been known to go out and you'll dig up two, three feet of asphalt, then you'll hit some rock and you'll hit some more asphalt on roads that are notorious sliders. So Klammer River Road, we find it, Lane Road, some of our other roads, we'll find areas where we have a foot of asphalt, where we just keep overlaying and chip sealing and overlaying and chip sealing. I know the city of Kelso also has several roads like that, when you have an area that slides, you'll just go and overlay it, just hope for the best.
I'll bet you that little section when you get out of Lexington, on 411.
Yeah.
I bet you that's, that's.
That's deep. And it's so that, and there's, and that kind of is, well, do I want to remove the asphalt because it's adding more weight? But then do I really want to dig down and open it up and make it move, so, yeah, it's always a.
I'm just glad that's the state.
Yeah.
So for example, the north lot here, of course, being curb around it, the Lakeside did have to grind the parking lot first before they paved. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
So next slide on number five, we start, we have, we have a summary page that Sean gave for each of our budgets, but he'll go over the high points of it, then we'll go through the summary page. So on page five here, I'll, Sean, talk about our, our major revenues coming in for 2026.
So for 2026 roads, we're going to look at our revenues first, and the first place to start at is our beginning fund balance. We know we have money in there and we need to spend it down. We're anticipating about 16.3 million to start the year. Throughout the year, through our taxes, that being property, timber taxes, leasehold taxes or any other kind, we're looking about 16.65 million in revenue there. Grants being both state, federal or local ARPA dollars or any other nature of those, we're looking about 11.934 million dollars. State allocations, which is going to be motor vehicle fuel tax, MVA, maybe some cap dollars, or approximately 2.611 million. Interest, we're holding out about a half million dollars. We're hoping to spend the money down, so we earn less interest. And then miscellaneous, you know, we're going to have our reimbursable work for guard rail hits, maybe we're doing some work for our city, any kind of other miscellaneous items in there. So giving us a, a, a rough and summarized picture to the categories. And we can talk more in detail about any of those in specifics if you like.
Wouldn't that miscellaneous, like when you chip sealed it out in cast rock, that's where that would go?
That's where that would go, yes, sir.
Yeah.
On the next slide. And this is where that supplemental details out. Labor and benefits, we're looking at a little over nine and a half million dollars. Supplies, we spend about $3 million a year. Of those, about 1.9 is our allocation for the chip seal program, that's going to be the road oil and oil rock. The rest of our rock and asphalt materials is about another $400,000. Services, we're looking about 9.5 million, most, one-third of that's going to be the overlay program. We allocate $3 million for that program annually. ERNR is another big part of that for our capital equipment needs, and that's that hourly fee that they charge on there. And then internal services that we. And then internal services that we pay out is about another one and a half million. That's going to cover our insurances, our IT, HR, all that good jazz. And then finally, we come down to capital projects, just shy of seventeen million dollars. Now, that doesn't align with Susan's number from yesterday because we do have what we consider internal costs. You know, the engineering side, our surveyor side, inspectors right of way. And then some of those projects would be considered maintenance programs like slide repairs. So we don't actually recapitalize that, we're returning it to a previous state. And then if we get this all accomplished, we should bring our balance down to about nine point four. Of that nine point four, we're estimated to have about a million dollars of FEMA money in there. So that's money that's been pre-awarded to us for their small projects, and so we still have that being held. So eight point four free dollars with another million of FEMA pre-award money on top of that.
What plans do you have to spend that down, and how are you planning on spending it down?
So we usually like to keep a certain amount, of course, for emergency operations. And we usually don't like to go below that, what I think Susan and Sean feel comfortable with is going into the winter months, about seven million to eight million dollars in there.
Yeah, that's right. Seven million dollars really gives us the ability to make it to April, being our first infusion of monies. We usually like to, on a normal year with projects, our local matches are going to be spent in that August, September time period before the next infusion of property taxes. Or if there's a heavy reimbursement on a grant program, we're usually looking thirty to sixty days to get reimbursement back. If it's a FEMA project for a large style one, it's significantly longer. Keeping up on our maintenance programs, keeping up on our chip seal programs, keeping those roads in good condition is a priority.
How long have you guys maintained that balance?
When we first started in 2017 at Public Works, we had a balance very similar to this, and we had forward direction to get that spent down, and we did that the next two summers pretty rapidly.
Especially 2020. I'm one of the crazy people who had one of the highest capital program that the Public Works Department has ever run was 2020, believe it or not. We had an eighteen or nineteen million dollar construction summer where we went crazy. And my hope is that this summer, by doing the South Cloverdale, and here's the project, as I said yesterday, that's my big, I may not spend the budget down if we can't do Dyke Road because that has a four million dollar local funds on it. If we do that project and our other projects with their matches, we will be spending the budget down, that balance down to Sean's. If Dyke Road doesn't go, this nine million will be probably more like fourteen. Just that one project because of the local dollars. There is a potential, some of our smaller projects that I have scheduled for 2027 could move up, but they would still not make a five million dollar gap. We could add some more to overlay, which we've done in the past when we have projects set slip. Slip is not the good word, deferred. So our big plan is to get these big quarter projects done, the South Cloverdale where we have a big match, and the Dyke Road where we have that really big match. To get those done, we will spend that back down.
Yeah, we certainly don't feel comfortable with a fund balance being that high. Knowing the projects are in the queue, we just got to get them out of the queue and get them accomplished because of the continues to be at twelve, fifteen, eighteen million dollars, and the road fund shift is in play. And we know that, so.
The interest is nice, but it's still.
Agree, depending on taxpayer dollars. Yeah.
So if you're successful, it'll spend down to where roughly? What do you have left if you actually spend everything you're anticipating?
Nine point four million.
That'll be the.
Yeah.
That's our anticipated.
That is FEMA.
And yeah, a million of that's FEMA, so it'll be actually cash on hand, the eight point, eight point four million.
So what's your comfortable number that you'd like to see it running in approximately year over year?
The year ending at seven to eight is a comfortable number, especially if we have storm events and floating us through to our major revenue points in the year.
Okay.
April, October.
Because we can spend, I had them pull it for me, one day storm event or a multiple day storm event, we can spend half a million in a week if we have a lot of stuff going on and we're hauling in rock and everybody's working overtime and pulling debris. We spend a lot of money fast in a disaster, which is why we like that number to be where it is because we need that float until the federal government steps in and helps to reimburse us.
So this year, I don't have worries on cash flow. Like we talked about, August, September is our big project years. On years when we do start that seven to eight million dollar beginning balance, we have to plan our projects accordingly so that we do have the cash flow to get through those, those high spend periods.
So if you guys want to turn to one of these sheets that Sean gave you also, one that's called road fund summary on the top. We have one for each of our departments there. So in the highlights, Sean can go through this a little bit, but the ones in pink are the ones that may have some numbers that have changed a little bit from year past. So the ones that aren't pink, we've probably kept the same budget. Really hasn't been a lot of changes for the next two years from twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, but anything that's in pink has had some, a little bit of a change that Sean can go through.
Yeah, and most of these, you know, we know that our labor contracts are increasing, so we do expect to see our direct labor costs increasing. We did get a nice boon from the retirement this year with the reduction of our PERS rate, so we take advantage of that as well. Sign and traffic control, we need to keep our signs up and going. That also does include part of our, some of our snow items in there, nothing too significant, but keeping that going. Come on the back page, internal service funds for insurance. We all know what insurance looks like. Everyone's paying a little bit more. And then our inter-fund professional services, that's going to be where we charge our HR and, you know, OFM budget fees like that, our industrial time loss, it went down. So thank you, Kathy. Other services, we do have to pay the auditor to cut our fees. It's a small increase there overall. And then, of course, the biggest one is our construction programs, and we kind of just talked about that. You know, when we, a lot of these numbers do look flat. You know, I'm going to take the overlay project. We allocated three million dollars to that this year, and to do that, you know, it's, we develop our program to spend that value of money. So for example, in 2025, we had really good, a really good bid come in for our overlay. So you guys saw change order number one come in on that to bring that back to our anticipated spend on there, to really get as much of that on the road as we can.
On the bottom of page two, you can see the totals there, forty million dollars in expenses, budgeted for this year, thirty-nine million for twenty-six and thirty-six point seven million for twenty-seven. A lot of that is construction project driven. So when you see millions of dollars in drop, it's because we're not going to be, we're going from eighteen million in construction to fourteen million dollars in construction, so right above it. Other than that, most of our line items had very minimal, if any, changes in it. We've kind of stayed status quo. You guys ready to move on to solid waste, or you have more questions on roads? Or does Kathy have anything to need to add?
Sixty-three hundred dollars on internet?
We provide internet.
On the internet for sixty-three?
We have to provide internet to all of our shop locations so they can access time cards, all that good jazz. So we do have quite a few locations that we have to provide internet for outside of our local shops, which is ran by AT.
Okay.
All right. Slide eight on solid waste for twenty-six, twenty-seven. This first slide, just a little bit breakdown from the last couple of years, so you can see our tonnage at the landfill. Twenty-twenty-three, we did seven hundred ninety-two thousand tons. Last year, seven fifty-eight. This year, we're anticipating it being about seven hundred sixty-five thousand tons. So pretty consistent on the tons. As you know, we've had some better contracts in place and increases in contracts with some of our customers. So we went from twenty-seven million in sales. This year, anticipating it to be about twenty-nine million in sales, even though we went down about, what is that, twenty-five thousand tons in those two years. We went up a couple million dollars in sales, so.
And what's our, is our limit million?
That is correct, yeah. Each year, we try to be around eight hundred thousand, and that a lot of, that depends on one-offs. We have a certain amount of contracts that we know we're going to get the volume no matter what, but we do have daily calls or weekly calls for people who want to bring in C and D debris or just MSW waste. So we have to have room for some of that capacity. But no, eight hundred thousand to a million tons, we kind of like to leave that some headroom in case a project is, major projects happening at one of the ports or one of the mills in town.
Is the million something we instituted or is that our license?
The million is the permitted value for that.
And the, we want to stay away from that million so that it extends, we have longevity and capacity?
Correct. So we have about sixty, sixty years left in life?
Yeah, so the official date that we have on our financial analysis annually is twenty-eighty-two, went from April to October. And that is a straight line on there, not assuming any recovered space. So that, that does grow annually as we do that.
That's good.
Yeah, so twenty-eighty-two, we know we lost, we do flights over the landfill every six months. And the last six months cycled, our, our top section dropped.
Ten feet?
Yeah. Ten feet in six months. So we gained a lot of airspace back that we can resell again. So that twenty-eighty-two is going to turn into, if we stay at this volume, it's going to turn into twenty-three, twenty-four, it'll keep extending out.
Long as the state and the laws, laws continue.
Always, always the question.
Yeah.
So we anticipate about the same volume right now, depending on what kind of jobs come in. We know we're in the middle of about a thirty, thirty-five thousand ton project for the Port of Longview for the rail expansion. That's, we've got a little bit of that debris in so far, but it's kind of been on hold. So it might come in some of it this year, and some of it might be in twenty-twenty-six. That's a million dollar, that's a million dollar project for us, for sales.
And I think what you pointed out, even though it stays fairly consistent, the shift from industrial to municipal
Correct.
has gone in our favor.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have adjustments every year for CPI in all our contracts, so we'll be gaining on those.
Is there a certain, I think you may have answered this in the past, but is there a certain percentage that we allow of a certain type of garbage so that it doesn't eat up capacity? And have we gotten close to that?
So our current contracts, you know, over half of our waste is from within our county, being our local transfer station and our three large mills in town. And the, the large mills with some of their waste profiles make it a little bit more difficult. But from outside waste coming in, you know, we try not to do over, you know, three to five percent of petroleum contaminated soils, just we're not getting hard layers within the debris. And we're looking at what type of one-off materials we bring in because there's certain ways we want and certain ways we just don't want. And so we'll say, thank you, no thank you.
And also the time of the year. We, a lot of dirt jobs do like to come to us in the winter months for some reason, but it just makes a really messy working face for us, so we really just want dirt, you know, the dry months, usually, you know, May through September.
We need a plastic recycling plant.
We, we, yeah, up there on a windy day, I agree with you.
That'd go great in this county.
Yeah, there's so much debris. Seems like half the stuff we drop in the landfill from MSW is a plastic. So we have fences that we just got, I believe, earlier this year, we have ten, twenty-foot fences, I think they're twenty feet tall also, that we put around in certain directions. We know the wind's blowing a certain way and try to collect as much of that debris before it flies off the open face, because we have videos of, you know, tips that half the load is just not even landing, is just flying across.
Getting off?
Yep. Then we spend lots of hours cleaning stuff that's outside the face into the trees, creeks, roads.
Wow.
So, someone's always picking garbage at the landfill. So those fences do help if we have prevailing wind.
Mike, you said we, we, we gained ten feet of capacity. Do we have a program where we compact that, or does that just happen naturally?
We.
So the, on the surveys, the natural routing of the material, we will be going back over that and refilling it in future cells or as we do additional fill levels going up the hill.
Before it compacted that ten feet down, how thick was it to begin with when it lost ten feet?
So that area is about a hundred and twenty feet thick.
So you lost somewhere in the neighborhood of almost eight percent, ten percent? Interesting.
And those were all compacted with a hundred and thirty thousand pound machine multiple time passes?
And then we tarp it, and then we lost the ten feet after the tarp went onboard. So that's after compaction.
Come back around to add to it, you have to remove that tarp?
We do, yeah.
And then start again?
Yes, yeah. And so our permit allows us to go to a certain height elevation at the landfill. So when that drops, we now gain that much airspace back. So our next flight, we probably won't lose ten again, but we may lose five or something like that, so we know we can go another fifteen feet in that area.
How long does it continue to compact like that on its own?
It's kind of.
Depends on what it was in or rot.
Yeah, and it's usually not a straight line either. It's pretty.
Pretty quick.
Yeah. You know, looking back at some of the long-term cells, like cell seven or cell six, that we haven't been in for quite some time, we're seeing maybe a half a foot.
Okay.
And some of the cells earlier that were put in by warehouser, you get zero because it's all industrial waste.
What are you compactor with right now, roller, bro?
So we're compacting, if we turn to.
You already, you. I'm asking for a new one.
So it's called a, it's a Caterpillar compactor. It's an eight thirty-six K. They're about a hundred and thirty thousand pound machines. They're steel wheels that have hooves all, all around it. And it's pretty much the industry standard for that. It's the largest one they make, the eight thirty-six itself. They also have a twenty-six and a sixteen, but we need the big ones.
How much did you say that thing weighs?
About a hundred and thirty thousand pounds.
And they're about two million dollars.
Yeah.
Few years ago, they're about one-four.
Yeah, they've gone up in price.
Yeah.
Yeah, metals have gone up.
So yeah, they're articulated bodies, and I think staff really enjoys running those compared to the last legacy machine we have there.
So we move forward to some of the revenues and expenses at the landfill.
You know, the slide for solid waste revenue is pretty much what we all expect to see. We have some grants coming in from our LSWF funding, about a hundred and eighty thousand interest. It's going to differ depending on how much we have available in the fund balance. And then our tipping fees, our user fees, you know, it's twenty-eight point two million dollars, and that's the, our main driving factor. That's what we run.
And you may see that's a little bit lower than this last year, but that's what we have contracted. So that's our kind of our minimum. So we get the one-off jobs, the dirt jobs, C and D jobs, that will just go up from there. But that's what we know for sure. We're going to be getting through the scales. So it could be closer to twenty-nine and a half, thirty on a good summer, good year.
The contracts that we have, one of they up for renegotiating?
So we have a variety of contracts. You know, our longest one is with Nippon, and that'll be twenty forty-four. That's with the purchase of the landfill. Some, we have other short-term ones. We have inter-local agreement ones that are by convenience. So the shortest one could be a ninety days notice if we wanted to give that. Our county ones usually run on, like Pacific County is a five-year, West Rock has a renegotiated or renewal terms within those. We have a nice schedule of those. We can share with you if you like.
Yeah, we get you all the contracts with expiration dates or automatic renewals in there or by convenience, so. A lot of our locals with the counties are by convenience, like he said. So is that Lewis and Mason?
Correct.
Yeah, so they'll keep coming till we both say no.
Or they decide to say no to us.
But the, the transportation costs from them, it's saving them a lot of money by coming to our landfill. Next slide.
So next up is our expenditures. Broken out into some summary categories I think are interesting to everyone here. Transferring out to our capital enclosure cost is about nine point one million dollars a year. Our transfer station operations are about six point three million a year to keep that running. The lease payment's about seven and a half million. In our landfill operations, we have budgeted about eight. The lease payment's about seven and a half million. Um, in our landfill operations, we have budgeted about eight million dollars, a little over. Which brings us to just shy of 31 million, which is a, a difference from our previous screen. Um, as Mike said, our, our revenue is our budget, what we know we're going to be bringing in. On a normal year, we usually see twenty to thirty thousand tons of one-off material coming through. That's where most of our difference is made up at. Additionally, our, our capital costs are just increasing. Construction and equipment is what drives that life of the landfill.
Do you have, are you pro closures? Is that for both landfills?
That's just for headquarters.
For headquarters.
Tenant way is fully funded.
Do you have those dollar maps?
Yeah. Sorry. Too many pieces of paper over here. I'm sorry.
Kathy, I know you told me before, how much longer in our bond for that up there roughly?
I know we pay two and a half million a year on them.
Yeah. For some reason it's 2032 or 2034, 2030 early, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's 2030 is the.
Is when that comes due. So we're about five, five years, six years, five years away?
Cause they were 2022 bonds, so.
Yeah, I think about, was it still the same amount of 2.4 million about?
Yeah, it's, it's about 2.4 million a year on bond payment.
Sooner than I thought. That's good. Okay.
Just to run down some closure numbers, um, headquarters closure and post closure, we have about 34 million dollars in there currently. Um, tenant way closure is approximately 9.7. And that's 10 years into closure already. We do have some activities that need to happen there. Update wiring, flare updates as we continue to move on. The flare on there is 30 years old. So we'll see something along that coming in the near future. Just keep it closed and keep it clean.
What's the post closure cycle timeframe for tenant way?
Tenant way is 30 years.
Thirty.
Headquarters is 55.
What slides, the timeframe, what, what, how do you define closure or how does the statement like closure?
So closure is going to be the actual topping of the landfill itself. So um, that two-foot layer of material via geosynthetics, um, clay liners, another geosynthetic dirt, and then the organics on top of it's going to be the closure. As long, including drainage, gas systems that need to be put in, anything of that nature. The post closure is going to be maintaining that system for those years.
At the end of those years, then what?
We'll see if it's clean enough to not do it.
To walk away from?
And then if it's not, we get to continue to maintain it.
It becomes a housing development.
Yeah, well, there you go. Yeah.
I was, I was thinking a, a Topgolf, you know, get the long drives off the top.
Yeah. And if there's excess money at that point and they deem to close, it's go back to the general fund?
It does.
Up there, it'll probably become the wild horse farm.
So once again, we have an additional handout on that. Uh, as Sean provided, it says solid waste fund summary. It's a little bit smaller font on top there, but same concept with the pink items being some of the little differences, but the first ones of course are the labor cost. But then we have uh, other ones going down rock and sand and miscellaneous O and M.
Yeah. So like Mike said, we have a, you know, our transfers out to fund our closure, post closure and equipment. We are bringing that back down. We had a little increase there when we saw the price of cell 10. Um, direct labor, you were, labor agreements are labor agreements. Retirement, same thing we saw on roads. We got that discount on the per system. So we're excited to see that. We are seeing our rock and needs increase annually. Yeah. I know we came in before the board earlier this year to ask for that, building roads. Uh, making sure the access into the landfill is adequate. Operating supplies, that could be a variety of items. It might be tarps, it might be some piping. Could be whatever they need to keep the place running.
Did we liquidate? Have we liquidated that 200,000 for this year? I'm assuming.
We have.
Three fifty for next year.
I don't know if we received the final invoice. We did have another purchase of piping material for our drainage come in. Um, and that should have liquidated that line. And then the last one, of course, we, I'm sure we're going to see this everywhere is our insurance charges. Everyone's insurance rates are insurance rates. Um, some of the other items that aren't, that aren't highlighted, you know, that are big costs on here, of course, is the lease, uh, our payments to waste control to operate the transfer station. You can see that from our transfer station operations slide to the supplemental, we do have about a half million dollars of additional costs. That may be credit card fees, taxes, our household hazardous waste program, tire recycling, things that aren't part of the uh, transfer station operations.
I see meals and lodging. We got people living at the landfill?
We, we do have certifications up there. We are required to have Molo certification and we're trying to expand that to more people. Um, and I think we have five currently and we have to have annual trainings to maintain those certifications.
One major expenditure that was going to be on here was cell 10 development, moving, we're in cell nine now, and I believe it's, is it 14?
It is about fourteen and a half.
Forty million dollars to build our next cell. Uh, we're bumping that out. We have enough capacity in our current cell to be there a couple more years. So we're, we're bumping that out, I believe hopefully to 2027. So next year you'll see a, a fairly large expenditure item to build that next cell. So the, so how big is the next cell?
Actually, cell 10 is one of our smaller cells. It is a corner cell, so it has two slopes on it. So the um, volume of it is reduced. Um, cell 11 and 12 are very small footprints, but they're two of the largest cells because of how they lay back on all the previous cells. So smaller costs on 11 and 12 in the future. With a significant increase in volume, cell 10 being a large footprint, but being a double corner um, is more expensive with a lower volume, but overall they all build together.
So you're, you had about a $2 million reduction and that's primarily because of your transfers out?
Yep. And now into picture time. So this is a picture of the compactor we're talking about. Um, this would be the last new piece of equipment in the landfill for some time. Um, we want to have three compacters on site so that when we do need to refurbish a compactor in the future, that we have two available and have one on rotation for refurbishing. Um, it's about 60 to 70 cents on the dollar to have it refurbished instead of being new. It does come back with a new VIN on it as well. So it's pretty much a brand new machine. You're just keeping those, that body together.
Wow, they give it a new VIN and everything.
Yeah, it's a full, full rebuild on those refurbishments. So it's uh, once we have the number we need to operate. The uh, last one we bought was 52, 56 weeks. It's sounding better now though. So they were being built out of Brazil. They're now being built out of Texas.
Well, I do remember the last order we placed, we placed it way, way ahead of time because you had, you guys were at a long wait time.
Right. Yeah. So we do have two of these onsite currently, and this would be the third one added to the fleet. We would get rid of our last blue machine, I like to call them. They're undersized and they came from either tenant way or early, early landfill years.
Is there a resale market for those?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just, actually just sold one. Yeah, but not for a lot of money.
No. Um, the, the one we sold was a Aljon 500. It's a very light one. I think it was only about 60,000 pounds, so about half the size. Um, and it came from tenant way. So it's, it uh, it's seen as years.
And did you say 65 cents on the dollar?
Yeah, 60 to 70 depending on what they find.
It's like 1.2 million to rebuild one, I guess.
Deal.
Wonder if I can get a rebuild with a new VIN number.
I know it, wow.
Yeah.
So the, the anticipated cost on this is a little over $2 million. Next slide. Uh, we also have a request for a, a used haul truck, a 30-ton haul truck. Um, we're estimating about $200,000 on this. In 2025, we rented this vehicle twice. It was approximately $28,000 to rent it.
We, we do a lot of road building there, a lot of rock moving. Um, these actually can be driven, driven out onto the fill, unlike our 10-yard dump truck. Uh, these are about three times the size of a dump truck and we actually take it out. When, when we do gas lines, we can actually take the the rock right to the gas line rather than dumping it with a 10-yarder, then picking it up with a loader and then walking that out in the field. This saves us a lot of time and effort. So this last year we decided we'd start renting it to see how well it worked and we're a lot more efficient.
So you spent a little over 50 grand was the rent last year?
Uh, 27.
Oh, 27.
Twenty-seven and a half.
We ran it twice, but the total cost was 27,000.
Oh, total cost was 27, okay.
We just ran it one time for a month and a couple of weeks the other time. I'm just making sure we had on some major projects.
Yeah.
But it'd be great to have one year round up there.
So when you're looking at the cost of, of new or even used equipment, do you check and see what it would cost to rent one of these things by comparison and see what the payout would be on it?
Yeah. And so when we were renting this year, you know, that was only twice this year. I think if we owned one, we'd be utilizing it more frequently. Um, but on those two times we rented it for, one was about a month and the other one was about two weeks. Um, it was about 27 and a half thousand dollars.
And new, used, new haul trucks run between 500 to 600,000 dollars.
Okay.
So we, we figured we didn't need a brand new one up there, but we needed something that wasn't going to break down a lot. So something with maybe four or 5,000 hours on it, something that came maybe off a lease.
What do you, you need to get, if you're at 27, you probably need to get eight years or something out of it?
Yeah.
You think that's reasonable?
Yeah, I think so. Um, most of the equipment we have up there is either came from tenant way and, 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 and other than our compactors. Or it was a hammy down from warehouser. Like we still have the service truck from warehouser that we're utilizing, water trucks. So.
Water trucks, yeah.
So if it's seven or eight years, it could actually turn out to be more than that. Because it doesn't leave the fill. It won't get tons of hours as in like road miles, but so.
I think a really good example for comparison would be our loaders uh, up there. You know, it's the same type of use case. You'd be using them pretty much in tandem. And those are from 1999.
Well, they were not, for 1999.
Yeah. The next request is for a steel duram roller. So this is for compacting our roads after we built it or after we've refurbished it with the grader. Um, we've rented this piece of machinery again this year. This is not one we own. Um, we've rented it approximately seven times for varying amounts of time and we spent $25,000 on those rentals this year.
And we have about 125 trucks a day up there, as you know, and they are on pavement on the 1600, but once they leave pavement and go on the dirt road or rock roads and they're actually usually climbing a hill loaded. And so they're churning up that road the entire time. So we're out there weekly with the grader, re, rebasing that road. And certain times of the year, we have to get the, uh, the roller out there to really compact that to make it worthwhile for us to keep that road, road open. So instead of renting it, it just makes sense for us to buy our own at the landfill.
So this is a newer, used one?
This will be a used one also.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And probably not the one in the picture. That's probably a couple hundred thousand dollar roller.
Are any of these used equipment you're, we're picking up, got any type of warranty left on them when we get them?
Usually not.
Probably not. Yeah.
But usually we'd send our, our maintenance, our ERNR crew, uh, they, they'll go on a site visit before we buy anything, especially off auction. When we bought our last service truck, we actually flew to Pennsylvania.
I think so.
To look at it, spend the night there and came back. It's worth a couple thousand dollars to go look at a piece of equipment with the mechanic before we, especially when we're going to spend now 60 or 200,000 dollars on something used. Because a lot of times we don't find these locally, or at least we do, it might be at Ritchie Brothers, but they may only have a couple of them and they're maybe not at the standards that we want. So we have to travel the west coast or possibly back to the east coast to find something quality enough.
And our personnel have the ability to work on all these things. We don't have to like take it to CAT.
Correct, yeah. We try to keep with a CAT brand, best, most, best we can. Our last excavator was a John Deere, but still familiar with our staff.
And, and the reason behind it, we want our service, if we do need to have a third-party service come in, they're local enough that they can respond in a timely manner.
So those are only, are only three requests for equipment for the landfill this year. Move on to, we have water sewer, ERNR and shooting range to end with. So we have quite a few systems managed. I think we talked a little bit about this yesterday and you know, the last few months, but you know, between water and sewer, Ryderwood, Camelot, Toodle, Woodbrook, Toodle River View, uh, Port of Longview. I think we talked about yesterday during the rate setting, our proposed rates of 4% increase, but also about 1,350 customers looking at no new personnel or no new equipment request for them. And Sean can talk about the projects we have in progress.
So you had, and it's been very helpful with the ARPA dollars. Um, so we are into three of our projects are either ongoing meters Savannah talked about earlier today and the install of those meters. The, we use ARPA dollars for purchasing those. Uh, we have the Toodle water low pressure zones. It's in progress. That's going to be uh, Monita Way area. We have the Toodle wastewater plant improvements and that's what this is a photo of. That's the Toodle wastewater plant. That's not a, uh, that's not a track there. Upcoming projects, we, on Tuesday, you guys uh, sent Camelot loss system out for bid. Uh, the Redwood emergency water system is prepping to go. And then of course we have Shadow Mountain, which is in progress, but will need to be completed before the end of 2026. And those are the main uh, capital projects going on. Budget wise, we're starting off the year anticipated at 1.4 million dollars. Um, our revenues, which are mainly funded through our user fees, once again, the customer base is looking at 2.7 million. Uh, labor and benefits are 1.2. We have our transfer to capital reserve of 750 we've held there. We, that may need to be adjusted in the future. Um, supplies about 512,000 and services at 826,000. Supplies, our main supply we buy is water. For our Toodle water system, we buy water out of the Castwalk Regional Utility System, which we are participate in. Um, and we have a meeting on that next, next week, I believe. Services, very significantly, depending on our needs for the year, but we can get into some of that as well. Our ending fund balance, we are spending down our ending fund balance and we're cognizant of that. We will be looking at rate studies as we talked about yesterday and capital planning studies to see if we can reduce our capital fees, uh, what we're transferring over and we're cognizant of that.
Where do you like to see it?
I would like to see two months of expenditures as our ending fund balance in our operations side. Our capital side, we have approximately $5 million right now. Um, we will spend some of that on Shadow Mountain and through our other capital projects. We want to continue to grow that, but we also always have the option of debt and other grants available to us as we try and uh, upgrade our system or update our system as much as possible.
Is there any debt service out on these systems?
I believe we have one debt remaining. I think it's a Department of Commerce Water Grant. And maybe it's sewer grant. We, we, in the past, we've had four to five at a time. We have paid those off. Um, if we were to have done the capital projects we are doing with the ARPA dollars, we would have needed to um, fund those through debt at that time as well. Um, if we were to have done the capital projects we are doing with the ARPA dollars, we would have needed to, um, fund those through debt at that time as well. So on to the other supplemental for water sewer, really lay out what our detailed spending is for water sewer. It's going to be the water sewer fund summary item. Um, kind of talking through our chemicals, you know. The highlighted items are chemicals, water for resale, that's what we talked about. Uh, of course, insurance again, our internal sun, internal service fund repairs and maintenance. We are dropping that down. That's when the roads department comes out and digs holes so the water sewer can fix the pipes. Uh, we're looking at doing less there. Taxes is always an item that's going up. We're looking from seventy-two to eighty on that one. And then credit card fees. Um, going up from eleven thousand, six hundred to fifteen to sixteen and twenty-seven. Trying to hold as much status quo as possible on here until we get our, um, studies completed.
Did we use a credit cards more? Are we planning, I mean, are we planning on using them more? Are we planning on issuing more cards? And or is that just they just say, hey, we're going to go from seven percent to twelve?
So yeah, that's the, um, fee we, we incur. We do pass on some fee to the customer when they use a credit card to pay on water sewer. Um, but we do incur some of that.
Chemicals. Please tell me no fluoride.
It's fluorine, uh, putting my carbon in and fluorine, those types of stuff.
No fluoride earrings for us?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
That's on the last slide. We're proposing fluoride and, uh.
How did we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollar reduction in water resale?
We over budgeted last year.
Okay.
We put a higher dollar value in because we have not had that meeting yet. Uh, we put in what we've spent for this year.
Okay.
Uh, once we have that meeting, we may have an adjustment there.
Susan, you, you talked a little bit, uh, yesterday and it piqued my interest of what you think that number was because in my opinion, we don't have reserves. If we had a major thing out there, we'd have to find a way to fix it. And you talked about at least having reserves that would cover our, our commitment if we got grant funds.
Yes, that's our capital budget. So.
Is that what we try, try to shoot for? What would be our?
Yeah, that's seven fifty that we're putting in. Yes, that would be our part of it or that seven fifty goes to pay off our debt.
Okay. Do you think that seven fifty would cover our part? If we had a major at this time, or are we still short?
So I believe we have about five million in there now.
We have five million approximately.
We have about five million that in the, that reserve that, that seven fifty is going to.
Oh, okay. So that reserve right now has five million into it. This is just for this coming budget.
You'd put more in there, correct. Yeah. But five million still by.
So if we had to put a, a ten percent participation or something, that would cover like fifty million. Would that cover a major?
Yes.
Thing out there?
With our, with our, the systems that we have, yes, um, because we're, we have smaller systems and our plants aren't a fifty million dollar plant like, not like Turwas projects that's going on right now. We have a much smaller operation.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better.
If, if we were to replace one of our sewer plants, what's a general figure? Like if we were to do Woodbrook? Sorry, I'm just, I'm just catching off guard here, Susan. Rough number.
We're looking twenty to thirty, I would say. Would be my guess. Still hold me to that. I'd have, really have to go back. Uh, there was a study done a few years ago. A few years ago, I'm talking ten, fifteen, a few years ago. Um, but that, we're redoing that right now.
So that's what we're working on. I, I'm kind of getting the commissioner Raiders point where we want to be in a position where we don't have to do huge increases. So I'm, that's where I'm kind of leading and getting a little comfort zone. If we're, we're kind of there, we think they're there.
And, and that's one of the things, projects that is actually ongoing right now is we are working on the Woodbrook alternatives. Uh, what is the best way and what type of system do we need to replace that plant with? Because that plant has been deemed by, um, ecology that that sewer treatment plant is no longer meeting the permit requirements. So we need to be in the process of replacing it. So that will be our next big project, doing a Woodbrook sewer.
So in this, this study you're doing is going to kind of address all that and, and we'll get a number from that?
Yes, it'll have a planning number in it and we are getting an alternatives analysis done. So we're looking at the alternatives of putting in a bunch of pump stations and pumping it to the Beacon Hill system so that it will then go down to Turwa. Um, putting in a comparable plant to what we have now or putting in a packaged plant is what they call them. So we're going to have the off cost benefit analysis on all of those and we'll be able to go with a selection, get ecology's buy-in and then start moving forward. Um, the grant cycles, um, are in the summer for those, uh, to apply for years moving forward.
I, I think I'm just a little sensitive because I think our, our systems, like we're out in Ryderwood. We're, we're serving an older population that's sitting on retirement income or social security or something and and I don't want to have to surprise them with a huge pop one year.
And as we find those fundings, either once we get the number for those plants, we'd be able to address that as well if we need to do any debt issuances in addition to grants.
Okay.
And we're being fairly aggressive on the capital reserve. I'm earning out of the point eight million dollars in revenue, seven hundred and fifty thousand is going to reserves. So a quarter of your money is going there. There's just, there's just not a lot of revenue coming in to put aside. So we're putting maximum out we can. It's just not a lot there.
And I don't disagree with that. I think that's a good, good plan. Yeah.
It does draw down our any fund balances. It's one way or the other. So.
Okay. What, what causes a, you said that we are dealing with a pump station right now that doesn't meet the code to get permitted again. Is that based on output? Quality of water? Why is it good enough for one permit, when at one point, but not the other?
So it's the wastewater treatment plant and the reason it's no longer meeting the standards is because the amount of flow um, has exceeded your design value. And it is no longer meeting the, uh, total suspended solids, the BOD and the volume that we're outputting treated to the levels that ecology requires. This is an old lagoon system that was put in in the seventies that was not meant to last more than thirty years and we're past fifty. So we're at the point where we need to do something to have it meet standards.
Standards go up all the time.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Two more smaller, I wouldn't say smaller, but two more slides and departments here. ER and R.
Helps turning it back on. ER and R, um, we talked about motor earlier. Um, ER and R, just want to give a little update. It's an internal fund established to fund the ongoing replacement and continued maintenance costs required by RCW. Um, as we talked about rates yesterday, it's literally to fund the maintenance and, uh, replacement of our equipment. We do have three requests, um, for equipment replacements. And the first one is a three-quarter ton pickup with a signboard on it. So that's why we're seeing a little bit higher cost on there. One of our sign trucks, a one-ton flatbed truck, which would be outfitted to, you know, carry a crane on it and, um, all the sign material to fix large signs on the side of the road. And then a water, a water truck as well. We're just up for the end of life on there. Some of the controls are no longer adequate and staff's recommended that that's time for that one to be replaced. So we don't have any, uh, dollars and cents on here right now. All of this is funded through the road fund on that hourly rate that we discussed yesterday. And currently the balance is about four point six million dollars in there and that is all to replace equipment in the future.
So these three requests have been fully funded and have monies available to replace them.
Well, interestingly enough, I attended the capital fund budget for the, our capital budget review today for the Porta Longview. And, and they found a new water truck and, and detailed out in great detail how much it would have cost to rent it per month.
Yeah.
And the payout on it. And they're going to buy one for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So I hope you find one like that.
Yeah, depending on their, their needs, we, we, we have.
Yours might haul more water.
That and different, uh, valve systems because we do, most of ours is used for flushing roads after oil rocking and also getting leaves and debris off the roadway. So it might be for a completely different usage than what they need a water truck for, but maybe we get a two for one special with them.
Yeah. Get a discount. Buy one, get one free. You want the free one?
And that, we, uh, did give you the detail for ER and R's expenses as well. Um, not a lot, has pretty much no significant changes on there. Nothing I really highlighted. The value that changes the, the most throughout the years is usually the machinery, equipment requests, the very last line. And that's the three pieces of equipment we just talked about. Um, other big items is, you know, our parts inventory, the miscellaneous O and M. That's where you get our parts brought in, inventory those parts and then use them on vehicles. Um, fuel for gasoline or diesel, uh, and then repairs and maintenance, keeping everything going.
Yeah, pretty status quo, four point one million this year to three point nine six, three point nine seven. So not a lot of changes in ER and R's expenses.
You've got a lot of gas powered rigs up there at the landfill. I mean, I see the gas, your gas budget is bigger than the diesel.
Yeah. So for ER and R, all of our, uh, non-dump trucks, we actually prefer because of the idle hours on them. They'll be, you know, sitting on the side of the road with their signboard up or lights out or something of that nature and they're idling the entire time. And for a diesel engine, all those idle hours is not great, especially with the emission systems on them nowadays.
Good.
And our last item today we have is shooting range. The budget is the same as last year. He also got a supplementary sheet on that. It's only, I think, six or seven line items long. Uh, it's fifty-two thousand dollars. Over the last few years, we've done some major projects there at the land or at the shooting range, as you know, uh, two trap house expansions. Uh, restrooms that include water and electrical out there near the trap houses, paving the parking lots and the entrances. We also add guard rail to those, uh, entrances. Uh, repainted the clubhouse last year and also fence repair around the per, the perimeter of the gun range. And just to give you some volume there, the last calendar year that we got numbers through, through June twenty twenty-five was about fifty-four hundred visitors there. Um, as you know, their current lease expires at the end of this year. Uh, we're hoping to come back to you in the next week or so. We have some meetings, more meetings planned with, uh, county departments. And also I do have a meeting planned with the game and anglers tomorrow. Uh, just to give them some feedback from what we're looking at moving forward. And, uh, we'll hopefully give you guys a good rundown. And like I said, next Wednesday or the Wednesday after with another department with us to get, give you a, a game plan of what it looks like in the future at the gun range. And most of the expenses on that fifty-two thousand dollars were, we do, uh, garbage service, uh, some maintenance out there.
Um, water sewer, garbage utilities based. Um, if we need to come in with our staff to repair fences, repair, we rock gravel areas, um, things of that nature. Of course, there's no capital improvements as we don't have any large scale projects going anymore.
Savannah, are you in that picture anywhere? Oh yeah, I thought you would be.
I think she's one, two, three, four, five, six from the right, blue jeans and a.
Oh, yeah.
I took the picture so I wasn't in it. They don't allow me to shoot.
No.
Well, at least they allow Sean to shoot.
I was gonna say, I have a little dead eye over there.
Yeah. Well, he's not competing in the novice competition. He needs to move over to the, to the expert.
We, we need a higher level for the county, county group then. We'll see you there.
My son beat me by one play, so.
Oh.
Yeah. And he ended up winning the, whatever division we were in, so.
Awesome.
Good for him.
Yeah.
Even better if he got to beat Dad.
Oh, he, please let me know. No, it's just, we're pretty competitive in my family and he loved to rub that in. So.
Sure. So that's it for our presentation. I don't know if Kathy has anything to add from her side? No. Or any more questions from you guys? Great.
Pretty straightforward.
Right.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are you taking bets on whether we're going to have our first snow?
I was going to say, I, I heard somebody report that we had, they're expecting more possibilities of snow this year. I think it's how it was put.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving? Well, all the ski resorts would like that. Yeah.
Well, I don't think I'm winning the bet of no snow at sea level this year.
The amount of fat on the animals that we've been harvested have been thick, so.
Maybe not fifteen million.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate.
Hey gentlemen, we will adjourn.